Okay, thank you everybody for joining us tonight. We are very much looking forward to our evening together. And we are calling the order at six o'clock. Getting all of our board members and attendants. We are going to have the pledge. And do you all want to be a part of the pledge? Do you mind?
Awesome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the good will of the righteous just as well.
And before we start, so could you be able to give a quick look around how your neck, who's in this board represent, and you call pulls it, sorry, neck and veins and positions.
Yeah, you bet. And tonight, we have quite a few more people in attendance than we normally would. And it includes some members of our Equity Steering Committee, as well as our Equity Student Voice Committee. So that's why we see a few more people here tonight. And if we don't have Mr. Mitchell, you know, I'm sharp as a hawk.
Assistant Principal of Shadow Lake Elementary School and part of the Equity Steering Committee.
Director of Education Resources.
Pete Miller, Board Vice President, District Board.
I should have a right. I may still be a representative of the school board, and I actually made myself a candidate like that.
Chris Thomas, Principal of Rock Creek Elementary School and part of the Equity Steering Committee.
Trace Kraus, Assistant Director of Student Resources. Actually, I didn't even realize.
Who are you wearing? Okay, you can wear that. Follow the ones. Lea and Paula also look better.
I actually believe in the news and also Equity Steering Committee.
And Edward will see, oh, wait, should I?
What's that here? What did I do?
And Edward will see special teams.
I'm not origami. My my weight is, I mean, I'm gonna. And also more broad. Likewise.
I'm Carrie Burr, Assistant Principal at Tohoma High School, and I'm part of the Equity Steering Committee.
I'm sorry, there's some social issues with the high school. Steering Committee for Equity Group. And in a week, I think the title might change, but I'll just stop there.
I'm like handsome superintendent.
Hey, do you guys see our public relations director?
And I do see some of our Student Voice Committee members. Could you guys mind introducing yourselves?
Hi, my name's Lea Nester, and I'm President of Student Voice Committee.
I'm Kate Beer, and I'm also part of the Student Voice Committee.
And I'm Aditya Rana, and I am another student board representative.
Thank you, President Hallwell. We have several things on the agenda tonight, three primary things. And context for this, this is, you know, for like the gentleman sitting next to me. We've come a long way on this journey. And tonight's another big night on the journey. And part of what makes tonight really exciting is an opportunity to hear from some of our students who are involved in the Student Voice Committee and that portion of our equity work. And then also to have the bigger leadership team of the Equity Steering Committee come and talk about some of the best things over the last two years that they had an opportunity to do. And what their ideas look like in terms of key action steps, points of the system. And then finally, taking the next step forward with looking at the board potentially adopting an equity policy. The board's met for at least a couple hours already, looking at that policy and set us a way to do a little more work on it. That work has been done, coming back together tonight to give the board an opportunity to look that over and provide feedback on it. So that's the gist of tonight. And as is our normal routine, we have visitors, especially students who are coming to ordinate or work study. We certainly like to schedule them towards the beginning of that. That way, when they've completed their work, if they're interested, they're absolutely welcome to take off. You know, they get up early and also have homework, you know, for most nights, especially since AP classes. So that is tonight's plan. So with that said, I'm actually going to turn it over to Carrie Burr, who runs the Student Voice portion of the Equity Board. So Carrie?
Cool. Um, yeah, I had, I don't know why I got the lucky straw and got to facilitate the Student Voice Committee the last two years. And so I'm super excited to introduce Aleah and Tambeer. They've been with me since the inception of this, and we met during all the COVID stuff and everything like that. And they, say one thing, they, they will take it over. They have taught me to create as many platforms as possible for them to be heard and then get out of the way. And with that, Aleah and Tambeer.
All right, so hello, I'm Tambeer, and I'm a junior at Tohoma High School.
Hi, I'm Aleah, I'm a senior at Tohoma High School.
And we are both some of the original members of the Equity Board. Now we are kind of the leaders of the Student Voice Committee, which is at Tohoma High School. And we're just going to be running down our profits over the years up until now.
So year one essentially started in the middle of a pandemic online. So most of that consisted of Zoom meetings that happened bi-weekly or once a month, where we actually opened this up to a forum for all of our Tohoma High School students. We promoted this through Instagram, so if anyone wanted to come, more of a town hall format, and talk about what their experiences in Tohoma, things they'd like to see changed, and things that the Student Voice Committee could do. That was what we mostly listened to. We wrote down these ideas, either started to try to implement these changes while we were still online. But many of them were things like culture, or applying in our community, in our school, which during a line is a little bit cool because there is no physical community. But our biggest outcome of that was making a video that was presented to the district in this past year, which took us, I think, a month or two to come together with, finalize those ideas, make sure that those are the things that our peers wanted, who are running our district and our teachers, to hear about, but that was our biggest outcome from year one.
Yeah, so moving on to the next slide. We had about a dozen students volunteer amidst a pandemic to participate in creating this video. And this was shown to all of the faculty, and it was kind of just describing, as Aleah mentioned, the part of racism and equity that are oftentimes overshadowed and not talked about as often as they should be. And we'll just play a small clip of it today. In our needed opportunity. Unconscious biases are social stereotypes about certain groups of people that individuals form outside their own conscious awareness. These beliefs are formed by one's brain in order to organize social worlds through heterization. These biases can lead to microaggressions. Those are statements, actions, or incidents regarded as an instance of indirect, subtle, or unintentional discrimination against members of a marginalized group. Microaggressions can unintentionally reinforce stereotypes. It is important for people to know about these concepts because it can enable self-reflection, allow both students and staff of certain minorities to feel more safe and comfortable at Tohoma.
My name is Shanti Hall, I'm a sophomore at Tohoma High School, my pronouns are she/her, and I represent the Black community. Both unconscious bias and microaggressions have been a struggle for me growing up in a Tohoma school district. I've been asked if my hair is real, how I'm so articulate, to add on to the MLK Day lesson plan to help educate other kids on slavery, to come up with a nickname because shanti is too hard to learn and pronounce, all by teachers and staff members. It's great that there are very many well-meaning educators in this district. But looking out for these microaggressions is necessary for a more inclusive environment. An unconscious bias I felt was standing in a crowded area during lunch, when two students across the room from me began to shout at each other. They turned the corner as the teacher ran out of her classroom. Without hesitation, she bailed her way over to me and my two friends who happened to also be Black, and demanded to know why we were screaming. My friend asked, what made you pick us three out of everyone here? The teacher then backpedaled, realizing that she had acted on unconscious bias, when she had assumed that we were the lot of problematic students. Unconscious biases and microaggressions can also be the little things that teachers aren't even aware of, like using the terms in color crayon or skin tone clay, or referring to Europeans in history as "we." These all have a negative effect, and they person is a less accepting and inclusive place. We need to work to eliminate them from our district.
My name is Miles Witcher, I'm a temporary at Tohoma High School, I go by Heath in Atlanta.
So as this video showed, our first year was us navigating how to use the online platform to release our message, and it was also just the initial grassroots effort of creating what now is a couple dozen students, we're all working in our events to help us gain equity within our school and district community. So this first year, it was definitely one night I think we both appreciate, because despite being online, we were able to accomplish so much. And the district went out training videos, definitely, I think, one of our biggest endeavors so far. So let's move on.
Moving on to year two, with a little note about the video beforehand. There was a very specific format in which we talked about the issues, with it being, one, a definition on what issue is, because we're never going to assume that everybody knows what a specific term means. And initially, many people may have different views on what a term means, and where they heard it before. So it's important to establish a common definition for everybody to come to a common understanding. And then next, we felt it's very important to share a student's personal experience, a lived experience at Tohoma. Many students have said that if things like, if somebody did bring the topic of microaggressions aren't real at Tohoma, many people were very quick to dismiss the fact that it ever happened. To feel that if a person shared a personal experience, that it would be more easy to connect to for those teachers, for those district members, who everybody wants to create that it's a source for their students. But for them to hear about stories that actually happened, really deepens that personal connection. And then finally, ending it with these action steps, or like things that you should avoid, or things you should do, because it's not just telling people that this is wrong, you shouldn't do it, and just leaving it, it's educating them on how unaccurate they can take to grant that future that we all want, to ensure that it is, it is not just a one-person thing, but it's a systematic change to our future. So for year two, we took all of that and brought it in person. And one of the biggest things we started off with was creating a Tohoma Instagram to, we are the Tohoma Student Voice Committee, and we wanted to create as many Student Voice Committee as possible. And for us, that is through social media, we are a social media generation. So we wanted to be able to reach out in a way that's much deeper than. So we created this Instagram account, where we post with events that we're doing, with, we want to hear you guys' ideas. We wanna, what are some issues that you have right now at Tohoma? And how can we help you guys, like, bring this forward, and how we create a collaborative discussion? We started that off with the Instagram pretty early in the year.
And just to go to know about the Instagram, we are so close to getting a hundred followers, which is a great milestone for us influencers, so maybe I'll repeat all of that. And over the past couple months, we have partnered up with the video production team to release information about the Awareness Month. So for example, today at lunch, I filled the Asian American Pacific out in our Heritage Month video. So in that, we basically just explained what will be occurring in that month, why it is so important, and what group they kind of is recognizing. And then we explained key individuals of that month. So a couple months ago, we had Women's History Month. And before that, we will be starting this video, but we were just kind of cycling through not only action steps, but also an explanation of examples of people that we should recognize. Because oftentimes, those in these minority communities, that's why we need a month, because there are oftentimes where we don't have that opportunity to be recognized. So in this way, these are shared every week or bi-weekly to the classroom. And this allows everyone to see and every day can learn about what these months tool mean. And then they can go into them with a more open-minded view and perception. So we'll do this later for that.
And you're to be here for the editing multiple essays.
Is there a spot for that?
Right, right, right.
Wait, all right.
All right, I forgot. And that is, this hand to the Student Voice Committee for some important info about Black History Month.
Hi, my name is Lea Nester, and today I'm here representing our Student Voice Committee. As an ongoing project, we are working to create a series of video segments that highlight different cultures within our community.
I'm Big Bamba, and for our first segment, we are going to present some information about Black History Month.
Black History Month started off as a single week in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson, to encourage people of all ethnic and social backgrounds to talk about their Black experience, which is frequently left out of textbooks. President of Board officially recognized Black History Month in 1976, and now it is celebrated across America every February.
We frequently discuss iconic figures in history like MLK and Barack Obama, but fail to acknowledge other influential individuals from the past and the present. Let me introduce you to a few of these people. While Martin Luther King Jr. is known as the face of the civil rights movement, Coretta Scott King also greatly contributed towards the fight. As a singer, she incorporated music into her social activism and became a voice of peace for the whole world. The reason we celebrate MLK Day is because of Coretta Scott King, and her fight to ensure that the civil rights era is never forgotten. Another woman who fought for progress was Marchelpie Johnson, a forefront leader in the LGBTQIA movement. As a transgender woman, she fought to defend human rights and advocated for social justice. In her committee, she founded STAR, a group that supported transgender youth that were facing homelessness in New York City.
Ways you can educate yourself this month are to read books on social justice, supporting Black creatives, entrepreneurs, and more. And finally, try starting conversations with your family and friends about how you could contribute to positive change.
Most importantly, change doesn't happen in one month. We all must grow and continue to educate ourselves throughout the year. We will see you again in March, when we celebrate Women's History Month. Awesome, that was very important, I applaud you for this last segment. All right, so that was one of the three Awareness Month videos that we have done so far. And these are just very important because it allows us to connect with the student body in ways that we couldn't have before. Because these videos, every student watches them, so it's a great vessel to share this knowledge, and moving on.
So addition of the Awareness Videos, obviously, that we are continuing on throughout the years. We did just start them in February this month, but it will be continued on throughout the, throughout the next following school year. And we've done Black History Month, Women's History Month, Deaf Awareness History Month, this is like current month that we're in. And then next month is Asian American Pacific Month, and so on. So obviously, the biggest accumulation as of yet, to date, is our annual, or our first annual, called the Culture Fair. It is the Culture Fair that we held on March 29th, and then you were there, I, I thank you, you were there, thank you so much. But this was basically the culmination of an idea that we had last year, what we couldn't do, because it was online. And I think it was honestly a great thing to not do it online, because I think that may have not, our turnout may not have been as great as it was with this year, being the first annual one. And I believe that the community really did show up for this event in an incredible, amazing way. So the next couple slides, I'm just going to go into the Culture Fair and what it is.
All right, so in our introduction of the Culture Fair, we did have culture performances. So one of them was from, two girls from Summit Trail, so they came and then they performed their dances. So one of them was from North India, the other from South India. So it was a really interesting opportunity for them to portray what their culture was like and kind of have fun while doing so too. And we also kind of got the audience involved for a couple minutes there when there was a sound issue. And I think that that was important too, because the whole community kind of just voted, they had some fun. And we also had a performance from Renton High School's Filipino students, Indian, and then they performed their, a dance with their entire student body who was involved in that. And that was a really interesting experience, because being into Tohoma High School, we just have one high school, so it's a really united experience. However, this is so important to truly see how other people are like, and how other schools are like. And this allowed us an opportunity to learn and also have a fun moment watching other people. So our cultural performances are part of our introduction of this event, which was led by myself, Aleah, and Dave, and we just gave a couple minutes of a presentation about what the Culture Fair was like, why it is so important in our community. And after that, you started off with that.
So one of the main focuses, right after the introduction, were the culture booths. These culture booths were run by Tohoma students, not only from Tohoma High School, but we did have Tohoma middle schoolers from Summit Trail, we even had a sixth grader, which I think was incredibly amazing, because it's open to the entire district. So I was really happy to see the turnout from middle schoolers who like, I don't know if I would have done that. I'm a sixth grader, but they showed up and it was amazing. Each person presented their country and their culture, and it was just lined down that packed area almost over to the language classrooms. And people would just kind of filter through, stop at the booths if they wanted to. Each person had a bit of a presentation about their culture, an explanation of their posters, as you can see. If they had games, things like that, like the Korean booth had several games of part of their culture that people could play. Many booths had food that was prepackaged, that they could hang out, that people could try. I know I had that, I know a lot of other booths had that. And you had booths like this one that were like showing ceremonies that are part of their culture, and they were performing on people who were obviously willing to do so. I think it was an amazing experience, especially just to see like there were so many kids there. And it was really, really nice to just see these kids just ask their questions and be able to tell you things, and then be excited to learn about something new, and their parents along with them. So I think that was one of the biggest things. And it is quite important that these booths are run by our students, and not just high schoolers, but from the entire district.
Along, I think it is just, it is such a valuable thought that these are made by students, for students, and their peers, and their community members. And it just goes to show that the impact that the Equity Board has had. If students are willing to spend their busy Tuesday nights, we all have homework, to come to school for a couple hours and show, and be proud of their culture, and also teach others about their culture. And the teaching part is critical too, because being educated on what others are like within our very own communities allows for a more open mind about these issues, and some more appreciation of the diversity within our community. So along with that, we have a human library and storytelling. So this is more of a collaboration with the main Equity Board. And in this, there were key figures who had interesting lives, and that they wanted to share their stories because their influential lives and their stories are passionate and meaningful. So these are very popular amongst the more young kids who came to listen to story in which some people who had written books about their experiences and their lives were willing to share that to the young children. And this is very important, because as young kids, that's when we begin to develop our understanding of the world, and our personality and character. And being exposed to this at such a young age ensures that things like bullying, instead of being a bystander, they'll stand up to it. Instead of possibly even conforming to a stereotype, maximum, the microaggressions that we learned about earlier, they'll know about the different cultures of our world, and they'll know about the struggles that others have faced. And based anywhere on the human library. So this was, again, it was somehow of a more emotional thing, in which these people had led difficult lives, and they wanted to share these stories, so they would sit down, had about a dozen people volunteer to do this. So they sat down with families, a one-on-one discussion about their life experiences, and how they overcame that, and what they wish to see in the future. So this is something that we also hope to incorporate into our annual Culture Fair, because it was just such a valuable learning experience for all of us.
So what's next, what do you want to do next? So there are a couple projects that we want to keep doing. Additionally, with the video, the Awareness Month videos, we want to keep doing that throughout the years. We want the Culture Fair to be annual, and we want there to be more participation, not only in the community, but also really getting out to those other schools, to, our main participation was from Summit Trail, so we want to reach out to Maple View and get those students involved. We want to get the elementary schools involved, even if it's just the fourth and fifth graders. Just getting, really showing that whole community, and making it something that's just a staple piece of Tohoma. My example, I want to talk to Mrs. Burr about it, I have like a younger brother, he's in, why am I forgetting? He's a kindergarten. He goes to Rock Creek Elementary School. And I want him and his friends to learn, but he goes to open to know that, oh, this Culture Fair is coming every single year, and I want to be able to participate in it. This becomes something that's very commonplace with Tohoma. Additionally, with our district-wide video, we also want to make something like that for students, because it isn't for not, this isn't just something that's coming from adults or things like that. This is sometimes perpetrated by students, and we don't correct those mistakes, or make sure that our students, we're teaching them to be compassionate individuals. We want them to go, we want them to graduate to Tohoma being. It's important to show that in these videos, especially like high school students, middle school students. I feel like for elementary school, we can have a different quote for that, because they aren't so solidified in certain contexts. By me, especially for high school, creating a video like that for students to watch, even if it's something that's just implemented within their freshman success classes, we know that it reaches all students.
And speaking more on the expansion of the Culture Fair, so this year, the Culture Fair was at the Tohoma High School. Although it was open to all members of the community, we would like to have the school somehow have their own, following the dilemma of, we did their own Culture Fair. So for example, we had some people from Shadow Lake Elementary School reach out and inquire about hosting their own, and wanting us to help them execute that. So initiating some form of this, big or small, every school over our district, that would definitely be the next step over the next couple of years. And the Culture Fair in and of itself, it definitely has so much more potential. And probably hosting it on a more accessible day, like Friday, and kind of integrating it into the classroom, allowing people to talk about it while in school, maybe even having presentations, where he just can talk about the issues and the questions that we give them with their classmates. That we did with MLK Day, in which each period had a different kind of spiel that they had to give, and talk about with their students, and that would definitely be a good idea to have at the Culture Fair. And to bring so, we could just increase how big this event is, and truly reach that level of education that is our goal with the Student Voice Committee.
Additionally, making sure that we retain that student voice. We would like to implement something in the form of a town hall format, where students can continue to come up with this, with their issues, what they want to see changed within our school, within our district, things like that. If it needs to remain on Zoom, it would be more applicable to all students within the district, we can keep it like that. But I generally agree that in person is always the best. So if you can have it in person, whether it be in the packed high school, or a location that fits everyone the best, having something like that, even though all students may not feel comfortable coming up to people then and there, we would also be, you know, available afterwards. And then making the people who run Student Voice more know that students can come up to them, whether it be in person, whether it be through our Instagram, our personal Instagram, and things like that, to be able to share their experiences. While I do think we did a pretty good job this year encapsulating a lot of students' experiences, we obviously didn't get everybody. So to make sure that we are truly getting the voice of all of our students, we want to have those town hall experiences. And I think things like that also will generate just an open mind for everybody, who would even just participate and be in and proud of those town halls.
So thank you so much for listening to our presentation today. And if anyone has any questions, we would be happy to answer them and talk with them. Thank you.
Any questions, President Hallwell? You have four numbers.
Director, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I can't, I had a conversation with, I'm a day plant, I'm a student, I'm influencers, and you know, it sucks. As opposed to adults kind of spinning around thinking, you know, teenagers, I suppose, can think these days. What's, aside from also kind of expanding that, that model of a cultural fair, which I wasn't able to, and I called it, I wanted to, but it looked amazing. I was extremely happy to see that happen. How do you expand the base of your influence, and the people who are, many of you who are, who can reach out in, in a peer-to-peer way? And what does that specific effort look like in the future?
So I think a version of that specific effort is, well, we have kind of already implemented, but we want to implement further. It's having representatives from each school. Typically, we have ones from the high school who are represented, but also from the middle schools. We have two middle schools, we have Summit Trail, and we have Maple View, and connecting them within our process. So in the past, we zoomed, we had two, two students from Summit Trail, and then a student from Maple View. And we were able to very easily connect through that environment. But when it went in person, I think the communication kind of generated a little bit. So reestablishing that communication with these middle schools, especially if we want to continue to event them, continue doing our work with them, and making sure that we have people that are known, whether it be through like events, and we have like assemblies, once assemblies are resorted again. So we're like, introduction of Voice Committee, like. So we're like, introduction of voice committee, like students like reach us and if you have any questions, these are like making it known for the high school, we have our, like our video announcements so they know who we are. And just letting that be known so people can come up to them. And I believe the people who are willing to do this job will naturally step up for her or simply go to school. These students were recommended by teachers who saw that they had some performance or some leadership, and they definitely did step up to this role in a fantastic way. So I think that is just one way that we did extend that influence.
And speaking of just up here to your contact, which is so important because you learn best when you feel equal to the person who's speaking to you. That side of the town hall is something that we're really interested in reinstating because we had that going on a couple of times over the course of the online year. However, just as you go in-person, it's a lot more difficult to have all those people from various schools meet, even if it's complex, it's very difficult to organize. And next year, just with some more brain power and more strategizing on it, that's definitely something that we want to do in the future some more. And I think that that could definitely help with people gaining their voice and wanting to speak on that voice. And I definitely agree with the idea that there are often cases in which kids are recommended by their teachers, but we also want to look for the kids that aren't recommended. The kids that don't always have that opportunity to be a leader and then use this. To give them that chance to create a difference and create their own actual community that they're striving for and be an influencer, do their peers a thing.
First of all, your guys' presentation skills are stellar. Awesome job. And one question I have is, in your guys' first year during the year of Town Hall, when you were hearing from different kids, whoops. Were you able to get much participation from our disabled student population? Were you able to connect with that much?
We were able to connect with them to an extent. So we did have one or two people who were actually part of the Student Voice Committee. They were seniors that were actually part of the disabled community. And they did bring some of their friends on who would discuss their, like their experiences. I feel like, and like honestly, I think it's honestly this year, it's been a little like a fast rate decrease with our connection to the disabled community within Tohoma, within Tohoma High School. We were able to get at least some of those experiences while we were on.
And I think that the issue under what I think that is also one of our greatest issues so far with the Equity Board. And it's just that there's not many people that know about it, especially in the younger grades. And I think that that's why it is just so important to advertise and continuously promote it. Like after the Culture Fair, we had just a drastic increase in the amount of people that were aware of what the Equity Board is. And the fact that there is a Student Voice Committee, otherwise you can't really expect people to have joined unless, unless they give them the opportunity to know what this is and find out that there are people like them and that they want to join on this board. And there are a couple of disabled members on the board this year. Hence, we have the Deaf Awareness Month video. But that is definitely something that we want to increase, especially with the younger student population, where it's just so important to feel equal, to feel powerful regardless of what they will do.
Absolutely. Thank you. And then one little nugget, armor to market maybe for your expansion efforts? That might be kind of cool. So you kind of have a constant presence with like teaching and food and cultures and everything there. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with the Dr. Tendra, your presentation skills are very stellar. This is good and well thought out presentation, so thank you for your here. I attended the Culture Fair, it was spectacular, just as you described. And I was really impressed with the poise and the celebration of cultures and the various booths and so on. Students were sharing, I thought it was really special. Particularly that students were driving that. Just so proud and so open and sharing about the importance of their culture. I wondered if there was a role for students, a different role in the human library portion of it. I imagine we've got some very special stories that can be told there where, you know, in a safe way, the students, you know, like they go learn and be bold, courageous and telling those stories. That could be a really special experience. I just wonder what your thoughts are about serving students there.
I think that that's definitely a good idea. Just one thing though with that portion of the event, it is somewhat more of an intimate and emotional segment where it was just a one-on-one conversation. And it might be a little bit difficult for a younger person, like even our age, to communicate that. And I do think that that is definitely an important idea. And if we could find a middle ground between what is comfortable for a kid and compared to these adults who have elaborate lives where they've matured and the stance where they can speak on these experiences, I think that's a great idea for upcoming years.
It could be, oh, sorry.
I think that we did reach out to a couple of students, this is my major, this is correct if I'm wrong. I don't know if they felt like up to it. I mean, it was Tuesday, it was Tuesday night. So it means we must go, I think like that's when we did reach out to some students. I definitely agree that it is important to, we do have amazing students and we have students who have gone through a lot in their lives, completely different than some of us in their lives. So I think it is important to highlight those stories about like adding on to the year. I do think there is that like additionally, a bit of a worry on the students who have, like talking to an adult about things, not wanting to maybe share that story, making it straight that they haven't known. But we never know throughout the years, there will be some of those students who are ready to step up and share. But I think it's important to not push students to do it, but instead give them the chance and be the, tell them that we want to hear your story and be ready to tell your story.
Yeah, it could be even something where it's, you know, one-on-one, where you, in a pack, like you had performances beforehand, and if there were a couple of students that felt comfortable, they could, we could have a, just grab the microphone and share there without having to tell the same story one-on-one 20 times. Interesting. Really appreciate you. There's a band. That is a great shot.
I am so grateful to you. The list of things that you've accomplished in a very short amount of time is remarkable. I kept adding notes. My gosh, David, I should do that too. So I wanted to know, big picture, let's pretend we're coming back together 10 years from now and you're listing all of the amazing accomplishments and all the impacts that you've had on our school. What do you want on that list?
I think it's on the most surface ground. The first bullet point on that list is that no child should have to feel irregular, whether in a costume or in their friend group. No one should feel that they are belittled or discriminated against or inferior. And I think that that is the most critical thing that all about the Culture Fair are going to. In the end, everything else that we do, whether it be the Culture Fair or those announcement videos, those are all geared towards gaining that. And I think the most important thing that we want to maintain is consistency. I think that this year with our first year fully back in person, we kind of just hit the ground running and it's really important to continue these events. That's why the Culture Fair, we are so adamant on making that an annual occurrence and expanding that because we know how important it is and how much of an impact can be derived just from that event. And of course, as more people come to high school and as we grow up and there's a new, fresh crop of kids and they'll have their own ideas. And it's a continuing cycle of growth and improvement for our entire community.
And actually adding on to that last point of growth and improvement, we want to see things that we have established to continue going on. But I also want to see that this committee in itself is still thriving, whether the Equity Board may not be around, so I think this could function very well even without it. And the fact that we should be valuing student voices in our community, in our school. And our school does make a point and say that we do value student voices. So I think this is a perfect example of showing that we do, like demonstrating, like showing with our actions, not just with our words, that we do care about student voices. And just showing that this committee is still going strong to maybe see that there's even more people a part of it, see that firm, like membership from students across all of the schools, things like that. And then also, we do have the surveys that go out every single year. And additionally, just adding on like not feeling, always feeling welcome and things like that, but students also having that, I feel like my voice is heard, my voice is respected. And I feel the Student Voice Committee is the perfect example, a perfect vessel for that specific checkmark to be marked out by all students. Of course, we're always going to have a few students that may say, I don't feel like that. So that's true or things like that. But the fact that we will have an open vessel for them to have their voices to be heard and for action to be taken and not just be like, okay, we hear you and then move on. But I said, we hear you, we understand you, and we'll try to fix that problem.
And I know that we are definitely over time, but just to go back to Ms. Tendra's point, that just kind of got me thinking that it is just so important to include as many people as possible into this. And I think that including the disabled community, and I think that one important way to do so is involving clubs. So for example, Tohoma, we have a Take Awareness Club, which I am part of, and also Asian Student Union and Way Space. And those clubs are just very important to involve in this event. This year, Asian Student Union was very involved. And I think just explaining that, uh, clubs that are involved and throughout the middle schools and elementary schools as well, that can definitely increase that every kid that wants to be involved in.
Louie and Tammy, I think one of the things that I get excited about hearing from you guys is your attention to the sustainability and the importance that you recognize in the younger generation and that the work goes on. My question is, you have a real captive audience of the school board. Are there barriers in the way to get work done? Are there supports that you guys see that may be out there? This is an opportunity for you to share.
I think a big part of what helps me like personally, when you initiate this Culture Fair, is reaching out to other schools. Tohoma is somewhat of a bubble, and therefore Tohoma, like I said. We don't have like Kent Schools, or they have a bunch of other high schools and they have a community to reach out to. We are Tohoma, we are in a bit of a bubble. And the Culture Fair in itself would not have happened without friends in high school because prior to the Culture Fair, I went to their multicultural show and I took inspiration from what they did. I reached out to their Filipino Student Union to ask for them to come and support for those things that we don't have as of yet. But being able to take inspiration from other schools that have those systems and being able to implement them within our school and maybe making it a membership with these schools and creating that community. Because I think that while I love that Tohoma is very united with each other, I also think that it may create this bubble effect in and of itself on accident. So I do think it's very important for us to reach out to these other schools. One, not, one to show different experiences like Ted Pearson, but also to strengthen our connection with those schools. Because I think that's something that isn't really talked about is that Tohoma kind of has a better reputation than other schools. And you can really see this is supported events and things like that. And that's not the culture that Tohoma wants to cultivate or remain. I think that many students at Tohoma don't even fit into that idea or that image as put into our other schools. So I think that reaching out through community events such as this, two schools that are closer to us, like Kent Lake, it's like two minutes from my house, and it's, I'm like... So I think that reaching out to schools that are near bias now would like support us and things like that, I think that will really help. And also supplement things that we don't have yet, but we will have in the future.
And as more of the struggle part, I think that the most difficult thing so far has just been in terms of, although these are events, it's not necessarily something that has ingrained into our Tohoma culture. And I think that that is truly something that is conjoined with our curriculum. And I think that it is really important that every teacher constantly keeps these aspects in mind. And I think we somewhat did achieve that with the video that we gave to the staff a couple of years ago. But I think that the greatest struggle in maintaining that consistent mindset on this because after a while, the Culture Fair, that, that's gonna, you know, wane off. And everything that we do, it won't be as impactful if it's not something that is constantly being told and constantly being valued. So I think just to continue that the teachers are one of this, definitely a lot of our help and support. And also, that's also why I found it was so important for the students to have that same video because then they're aware of those same things are out there, daily lifestyle even that they're not realizing. And we can help to solve that and in the end, we can truly achieve the goal that we set.
To you, Dr. Tendra.
Yes, I did tend to give a detail there and also have other questions. The first question of us, I think that continuing on with this, like what can this district do to help you reach out to other schools within the district into other districts? If that's not something you can just walk, walk up to a high school and ask and knock on their door?
Yeah, unfortunately, we cannot just knock up on their door and say, hey, let's, let's all be friends. But I am personally unaware of what their schools look like, what our partnership looks like with other schools. But reaching out to those principals, reaching out to those school board members, especially if they're somewhat within our community or you know them, for some of the things. I think it's building those connections through personal connections is what is really gonna help us because people who just want to spend their own time, their willing time, not getting forced into it. But I said, what to help our school to grow and then us in turn being able to help their schools to grow in some way, different form, whether it's just be building community. I think is one of those important things. And whether it be through joint school board meetings. And that includes not just school board members, but also just students that are heavily involved in that, they just be ASB or things like the Student Voice Committee that they have at their school. But building those connections that aren't just with, it just being by student, by student, but also having those adults involved and really invested in making sure that it happens. Because I think a lot of times, if the pressure's put too much on students who are already doing like 10, 20 things, like I, Ted, and you're with the sixth in Congress. I think that we kind of have a tendency to, things may fall apart, things may falter just because students may not necessarily have the time. So having the adults to fall back on to remind us, for, helped incredibly without all the things that we forget to do, saying, oh, don't worry, I did it, don't, don't worry, it's okay. Or just like being able to remind us, okay, it's time to say, go, it's time to do this. And just really helping keeping us on track while they were our ideas, were our things, without suggestions from our adults, this still wouldn't have happened without their help making things like breaking things on your schedule or helping us, being able to present presented things like the school board, then this wouldn't have happened.
And I, actually my class president, and in the beginning of the year, we had these conjoined meetings with, I think it was called the Patriot Sound of Life or something that was formed with our ASB. And we weren't supposed to meet regularly, but I think just with the chaos of the year, that someone fell apart. And I think that that would definitely be important to find those tools and form kinds of mentorship opportunity with them where they learn us what they've learned, what their experiences, whether it be them hosting Culture Fairs or cultural booths or what other schools do that we can learn from, but it's at our own district.
I just chimed in real quick, that what you talked about is in the works. We've had the COVID restrictions and it's limited the ability for schools to join together, but it's, it's in the works.
It's just kind of like a comment, but I just wanted to say, I really like how you guys like took the initiative to like set up a foundation. Just like even realizing that maybe through the Equity Board, you still wanted to have more student voice particularly. And then what you did last year, even though it was virtual, and then coming this year with the Culture Fair and everything else, I really just feel like you guys put in a lot of effort and that really shows. So thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Karen, even I can have to say that you got out of our way. Thank you so much for all the work you've been using for that.
This is gonna be followed by a hug.
Wow. To those, we talk, we're gonna be talking about words here shortly. And if you're not careful, words can just kind of register, but you've heard me say this before. It'll just register here. There's no way you can walk away from what we just listened to without feeling it. Not just hearing it, but feeling it. And the changes that we want to be discussing a little bit later are gonna come from feelings, not from thought, but from feelings. And they don't, not hearing this, but they set the stage for what we're about to talk about. We're gonna talk about the Equity Policy. I think we're gonna probably lean a little bit away from the procedure tonight because of the time and just the work that's been done on the procedure side. But we wanted to start with just some of the work that's been done on just a graphic organizer that we put together just to kind of formulate our thoughts for what's called the Steering Committee. And Trace is gonna start off with the description of that graphic organizer, why, why we chose to build that route and how we use it. And then we'll jump in and share some things we're doing that she thinks has to run.
All right, I'm not a parent on a PJ, and I'm slowly going to have to see what I can do.
For those who have taught with me or been in my class, you know that I can talk to them all. So I've got a few little dots, yeah, Mr. Hanson knows. And so does Mr. Weiss. So I've got a few little notes here to keep myself really compact. I don't, I'll stay where the wrong went to. But this, this group has been meeting, started off once a week. Well, I start along, it's been every couple of weeks for quite a long time now. And one of the things that we really, we needed... And one of the things that we really, we needed at the very beginning was a way for us to get really narrowly focused on what our target is. And what you have in front of you is visual is the tool we use to develop that focus. And what was in our mind as a, as an image was, you know, what is it that we wanna get to? What is our target? And then developing a bridge to help get us there. So that we didn't get distracted and we didn't get off on, out of, out of these lanes. We were really, really focused on getting to that target. And, um, things came up along the way that were urgent, that would be really easy to pull us away from that, but we kept coming back. And I don't know, Tony might show you from a distance, the original version of this later. But the amount of work and energy you can have, that's what it looked like before when we first started. And what you have in front of you is what it looks like now. And that, that is after us as a group meeting for a long time and really being intentional about, about the words that we have on paper. And it just gives me an incredible amount of joy, just having been an assistant for 20 years, to, to listen to that past 47 days and know that that's connected to this work. It's connected to the work of our system. Um, and to see some action happening as a result of that, just like Tony said, it's emotional. It's a big deal. It feels, it feels pretty incredible. So that, that's the short version of this tool that we started to talk way too long about, which I could easily. It's, it's simply a way for us to, to get really narrowly focused on what our target is and developing that. And we started off with the first sentence at the top of what Tony would take.
I'm gonna have you share that Abraham Lincoln quote from yesterday. That would kind of help us out with the, the pace that we're on.
Well, I mean, I think it's an Abraham Lincoln quote. I could be wrong, but it's basically something to the effect of, you know, anybody can talk for an hour, but you have to be really, really, you know, special people to talk to. So I think I made a better choice.
And I'm gonna try to stick to that as we go through this. Um, Tracy referenced this document a couple of seconds ago. And the date on it is November 24th, 2020. That's when the steering committee first started working on the things that we're gonna talk about here. And, uh, just the evolution and the focus that came out of that and working through, then doing it. And the result, one of the results is the good stuff, the, what the kids shared with us. And so as I talk through this, again, it's words, but if you don't put a face to it, I don't know that it has the impact. And just, you know, you can close your eyes or if you don't need to close your eyes, but you can just picture a kid as we're talking about this. Cause we started with this big document and then we kept challenging us, what do we want? What is it that we really want? And if you close your eyes and think about my kids when they came through this school system or my, we have grandkids now and some of your own kids are coming through this system, what do we want for that kid? When they show up to our schools or get on a bus to come to our schools or they're going to the bus stop to our schools? Four words, welcoming, supportive, safe, and inclusive. Four words. It took a long time for us to get to those four words. But the gist of the thing is what's our vision comes down to this, this phrase, this sentence. All the schools are welcoming, supportive, safe, and inclusive for every student, every student. And this was an important part of the work and the conversation that we've had, every adult as well. Cause I don't know how we can expect a teacher that's standing in front of a group of kids to talk about making them feel safe if they don't feel safe. So it was really important to us to include every student, to use that word every, and talk about students and adults as we work through this. Hopefully no one's timing because I make them over two minutes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of shift and just give you a second to just kind of look through this document. But look through it and think about your kids or your grandkids, um, as you're reading through it and what you want that experience to be for them. It'll come in three categories. There's a leadership category, there's a curriculum and instruction category, and then there's a culture category. And I'm gonna pause, give you about 30 seconds, kind of look through it. And then Scott's gonna jump in and talk about the leadership piece.
So as I think about these three sections and we start with the leadership, there's always those key words that I'm sure you're kind of pulling in on. And so I think that that's our goal as we go through each of these, it's not just to read these out to you, but really kind of focusing on one of these bullets that kind of summarizes the thinking that we have been on this. And so as I think about district leadership and is that kind of that consistent, ongoing piece? But I, I kind of gravitate towards that create, grow, and sustain structures, um, that promote culturally competent schools. And when I look at that one, when I think about the district leadership, it goes right back to what carried in the student voice committee. In that, that needed, that needed a district leader to help guide that, but then knowing to step back. And I think that that's what we want with all of our leaders and all of our staff is to feel, to feel that sense of, I'm gonna help guide them there and then boom, let them take it over. And without that district leadership, it's really, really hard. But I think one of those things too is, is what we do in our hiring and, and how we think about the questions that we are asking candidates and, and what, what kind of candidates we're looking for, uh, for coming and joining us in Homa. So those are kind of the things that kind of jump out at me and it's this, this equity lens piece. I think Tony made some copies of the equity lens maybe to pass out. If not, we can certainly make some. But it's kind of, the equity lens is a piece that, um, we're kind of using as a filter as we have these conversations, whether it's around curriculum, whether it's around, um, hiring practices, whether it's on PD. And that equity lens is really, really critical to the work that we're doing because it just helps have another layer of the work that we're doing and make it important for our leaders to be able to help lead this. Without district leadership behind this, it's not gonna move forward as you'd hope. The district leadership that occurred at the high school with this, with the student voice committee, they, they got that going and then the students took over. But we need that leadership and we need our staff to be on board with this thing. So that's kind of the focus of the blue leadership section.
Welcome. Four words, welcoming, supportive, safe, and inclusive. Keep those in your mind as you're reading through this. And it is the pieces that I, that our group, I believe it's important to share, is the time that went into the condensing of the original document and just the words. We literally had two hour meetings for our work. And one of the examples would be in this first box at the top, the word each is in there. And at one point that was every. And I feel like, well, every and each are not, they're not that much different. But to us, each about personal. This work is about making this personal. Yeah, that's why I asked you, picture your kids, picture them, their experiences, they go through this. What you want for insight, for these questions, when they're 10 years out of school, what do you want them to remember about that experience? Cause the learning will come, the learning will be stronger, their connection to what they're doing feels right to them. Those kids that were up here before, they get to say, our school, I think you heard it a bunch of times, not to them, but to our school. That's where we want to be. For 27 hundred students at the high school, like eight thousand overall, and they're saying hours, that's a pretty powerful piece. So this is an example, two hours probably, just each and every. Yeah, we gotta get a life. It was that important to the network of us. Uh, so that slides over to the, the middle piece. Talked about, uh, leadership and then curriculum and instruction. Bosses went over to Tracy and Bill to talk about the, um, curriculum and instruction.
I'll be real brief on this when I get this short call. Um, I think about what Tracy had talked about and just reflecting back 20, how many years? Twenty nine. Twenty nine years. And, uh, I think about my own experience, but not, not quite 20 that many, but 20 something. Um, and as a former instructional coach who's gone through curriculum adoption, when I look at this third one, utilization of an equity lens that's been passed around on every curriculum adoption. Uh, you know, as someone who's led curriculum adoptions, I remember there was a place that I joked about this, but I'm ashamed a little bit now and embarrassed, but there was this like equity forum that, you know, for adopting science curriculum, to look for counter narratives and, and, you know, make a curriculum that would reach all audiences. Um, it was a sheet that we just kind of did really quick, didn't really pay attention to. Um, but that doesn't happen anymore as a result of this work because of the work of the equity committee, um, because of the work of, um, this document. And Don, you know, probably more than I can, but we actually have a team now that goes through this process with the equity lens, correct? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Um, we've always had pieces connected to our curriculum adoption around bias and some, um, uh, materials and perspectives and representations. The piece that we're getting increasingly conscious about is what's the, um, representation of different perspectives? Um, and does our curriculum include those? And we have, through the change in the instructional materials review process, also included a lot more opportunities for, um, community and stakeholder voice connected to that. So we feel really good about the opportunities both internal to the system, but also the opportunity for community.
Everybody take that like 10 years ago, 15 years ago.
We didn't have that.
So that's one of those, when you think about like, uh, action items that come out of this document, that would be one of the action items.
Yeah, talked about leadership, talked about curriculum instruction in that third column. It's about culture. Yeah, I'm just keeping it in with these four words, welcoming, supportive, safe, and inclusive. It's that simple. How we get there is challenging. But if we stay focused on those four words, we'll find a way to get there. And well, like two minutes on Carrie and Chris, the last one.
Tony, as a constructive criticism, I think welcoming, supportive, safe, and inclusive should be underlined. That's what it's.
Well, they looked at mine more, didn't see the.
Oh, I'm gonna look at this one. Maybe they are. And the two, there's every used in here twice. Every letter in every should be capitalized. Who's it's for? For every student and every adult rather than every student and every adult. I'm gonna emphasize that. That's what we're trying to get to. That's taken or not, so.
Well, yeah, I gotta be approved in a week, so don't go too much further because they might try to fly that out.
I was looking over your shoulder.
Couldn't say that better. Couldn't say that better. Third group.
I don't know if you're, I.
I have the, the listening part. Um, so the, the third one is about culture and I, I wanna put your attention to the listen box. Where it says elevate and share voices of students and families who are furthest away from traditional justice. Um, we spent a lot of time, the first it was seeking instead of elevating. And we were like, that's just not, that's not, wait, if I was just wanna seek out, if I sought out students, I would not have that in return. So we were like, we needed some empowering students, it's elevating them, elevating them to a platform where they can be heard and seen. And I think that is what happened and that is what we want.
And I have a tendency to be long-winded too, so they reduce me to one word.
What's that one?
All. And so, um, yeah, I mean, the high school kids, one of them said, this is a systemic change, right? And so, uh, when you hear the word schools, um, I often think first of all, okay, giving the classroom the teacher upfront, right? But if we look at making this kind of change, the way we wanna make it, they go to, well, you know, the classroom teacher. Uh, it's the bus driver who reads you in the morning. It's the staff members who read you when you get out of the car. It's your nurses, it's your front office, it's your custodian, it's your kitchen staff. Imagine, just imagine the touch points that are being multiplied by expanding the staff members who are on board. And so, uh, I think this is so important for us to, uh, not lose touch of, of the power of having whole staff involved.
The why, this is the foundation for where we're about to go. As we talk about the policy, it felt like we needed to go through this process so we could get a, an understanding of what it was gonna take, the ingredients that need to be a part of this policy that we're about to talk about. So I'm turning this thing over to Mike.
Both are. Thank you guys and thank you for all your work on the steering committee, obviously. Um, you have meetings, two hours over one word, I'm extrapolating. I don't know how long the whole thing is going, but.
You're invited.
Yeah. The part Tony mentioned, we're gonna spend, uh, the rest of our time talking about the policy. You've got two documents sitting in front of you, so if you reference the upper right-hand portion, we're focused on the policy. And as, again, as Tony and the team mentioned, um, this is not your first time reading through the bulk of this policy and you should see evidence of, um, the primary and secondary drivers throughout the policy and the history of the law. Um, and as a reminder, the policy is the piece where we start at. And, uh, once we get to a part where the board has adopted a policy, uh, the relevant directors and groups, um, will die already in the secret for that. So we spent, well, yeah, I do not remember exactly, but we spent a previous work staying, um, I feel like it was two plus hours, um, with a first read through, run through, feedback. I know that Director Perry was not on board at that point, um, but we, all the other directors were in attendance at that meeting. Uh, and we were sent away with some feedback from the board directors. Uh, then also our equity director, um, and incoming equity director, uh, spent some time with some of the other leaders in the equity board, looking at open a little more time. And so that's the product, it is essentially the product we have right now. Uh, using our normal, uh, routine, you'll see that changes are in red, both strike through as well as additions that are in here. And, uh, you can see the addition, uh, additional, uh, definition there at the back. Uh, the board directors had an opportunity of multiple days to preview through this. So at this point, I'm gonna really turn it over to the board directors. I think you may have, uh, also been involved, is that accurate, in some of this work right here?
I was, yeah.
Do you mind sharing a little bit and that might be a good way to kick off the conversation, if that's all right?
Sure.
So I bet it.
Sure about what specifically?
The, the changes.
The change, well, so I wasn't involved in that.
Oh.
Uh, I, I, I attended the meetings that we did periodically for, it was probably the beginning of this year, uh, when I started to get involved. Um, the changes that we received from the, uh, the board directors, the others who were attendants of the January 18th meeting, um, the community that saw, um, that, that, um, that, that was then outside of our three meetings, just kind of Tony and Kelly and others, um, pouring into that and making some changes.
And I can only, President Hall, we get to a spot for discussion tonight where, um, any modifications that the board is interested in making are small enough where we feel like we could bring a first read, um, to an upcoming meeting of the policy itself. So looking for input or comments or dialogue from any of our board directors.
I have a question.
Thanks.
Or questions, I didn't have that. Yeah, so first of all, thank you. I see so, I see all of the, the comments that we gave last time, I'm glad you had some, I think, that. I was actively listening to you, Tony, and you said there were four words, I've heard them, welcoming, supportive, safe, and inclusive. So my question is, under philosophy, three of those words are in that first sentence, but not in the fourth. So I wonder if you could just add that, it's missing. So it, would that, would that take away from the intention that you all had with that opening statement? Oh, okay. I wanna make your four-word vision clear. I think I like every single one of those four words. I think it's really important for, for community and so I personally would love to see that.
Can I add to what you just said?
That would be a question. Yes, there's some judging, yeah.
Just adding to that, same point, I'm sure one line above that, I kinda wonder about the timing of, of this piece and wondering if we can play on those four key words. I know diversity, equity, inclusion is basically something that our public will recognize as the intent behind this policy. It's important to leave those words in there because it's recognizable, I get it, but it, it, it feels kind of generic and, and I feel like there's a lot of purpose behind this and that maybe we can prototype.
Pete, do you mind sharing, you and I had a conversation at Starbucks last week about a book you were reading that, I'm guessing has, has to do with that question that you just asked.
Well, part of it, part of it. I'm reading a book called What If by Stephen Rollins, and one of the points that he brings up, which I find interesting, is that the, the kind of, the vernacular is DEI or diversity and inclusion, but the way that he describes it is that inclusion is actually much more important in his viewpoint than diversity perhaps. And you need both, but, but the way he describes it is, you can have an incredibly diverse room full of people with, with diverse backgrounds and experiences and, but if they're closed-minded, then you're gonna, they're not gonna have a very productive session, you're gonna have kind of a mess. Whereas inclusivity, he equates to open-mindedness, or something inclusive, including open-mindedness. And if you have an open-minded room, it's also diverse, then, then you've got something really great up there, some, some potential. And so throughout the book, he reverses inclusion and diversity, not diversity and inclusion, just kind of reordering things. But anyway, just, just kind of dawned on me as I was listening tonight and the importance of those four words, that there might be a way to emphasize that.
I'm really good with the weight type.
I know you are. See here.
One, one question I have is, so as I was going through the policy and, and I apologize because this is my, this is my lawyers in my head, and one of the, and I read, I read, a policy is a, it's a, it's a principle of action, sort of policy, it's a guide, specific actions, in this case, a good policy of the board that would drive the actions of the directors and administration executing the policy. And so I looked, I looked through the policy and the terms, right, things like guide action. And eliminate barriers to practice practices, narrow the gaps, eliminate disproportionality, and ensure that each student receives appropriate supports. Those seem to be the kind of crux of the actions of the policy was to support. There are, there are definitions in the policy that actually, we, again, through the board contracts define them all the time and you expect to see those terms shared in the contract, otherwise you just don't define them, which no need. So there's defined terms in here that you don't see in the actual policy. So there's some, there's things about this policy that I think that distract me. And when I look at, when I look at this, this, this really resonates with me, the driver that we have. I can track all the way through that and I can see, I can see, in some ways, this goes in the policy to me than the policy does. But that, as a side, I focus on, one of the things that, that we can do is to, is to remove these, these practices, these processes that, that enlarge or sustain these opportunities. And so my mind, and I, and I handled these cases in, when I was a younger ward, used to having some, like civil rights law, you call it disparate impact, that's what you call it in the law, when you have a policy or a practice that, that, and as a point of this, I promise, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything to you, you're avoiding me, you're avoiding me. You can have a, you can have a somewhat benign policy that is actually discriminatory in effect, and you call it disparate impact, right? And so there's a whole jurisprudential process you go through to understand the impact and to remedy that impact. And really, it's just a result of things that were once discriminatory, you know, racist people, not smart, and it's like, well, we can't do it on its face, so we're just gonna vary in things that are otherwise very benign. So that's how this whole process came up to. My point in all that is that this is really important to me. Like, I, I never seen this before, this equity lens, like what it means. This is like absolutely critical, because as I was going through the policy, I'm thinking, how do we decide from an execution standpoint? Like, what are those things that are disparate impact? Like, how do we decide that? Because that's a really steep analysis. I mean, I've done it as a ward before, it's, it's a lot, it's, it's data-driven, it's evidence-driven, it's information-driven. This, to me, seems like it should be in the policy. And I don't see this in, this gives us a tool for going through things, going through our practices of policies as a district and saying, yeah, this may not have, this may pass the SNIP test at first blush, but if we dig in over it further, maybe it actually doesn't do that. And so as I look at the policy and I think, and I think of things that the board can establish that the, that the district, the directors, you, Sumitam Hansen, can execute on, this is, this to me is one of those principles of action. And when we say we're willing to apply an equity lens, I would love to see this in the policy because I think it is probably one of the most fundamental things, that it'd be in that policy to guide the decisions we make. And as we face this out as, as a, as a policy of the board, as a policy of the district, you don't want to know what this is. I, I think the policy, the policy itself is really not bad. I don't think it, it doesn't, it doesn't translate a lot to me, so I bet it has things that are instructive. Some of the things are, I think there's a lot of sentiment into it, which is good. I think it needs to be motion at a fair point, I mean, it has to have emotion, but our students need us to be smart, not just care about them, we need to be smarter about how we care about them. And so this equity lens, I've heard the word so many times, and I feel a little bit about now saying that, I had no idea what it was until listening to you. And I think if it showed up in the policy, I'd be really happy to see that actually, because I think it's, it's probably the biggest tool that we have in terms of creating equitable practices in our district. And without it being in the policy, I don't understand what the policy would be. That would be, that's a big change, I mean, probably eight minutes at least, but that's, that was kind of my opinion.
Can you give an example? Oh, like disparate?
Yeah, like what, cause I, like.
What does it mean?
No, like, so I'm reading the lens, calling, um, some of these things I feel like might be more procedural, like maybe we would, they would be addressed in the procedure, but I, I mean, to be real honest, I haven't gone too in-depth over the procedure. Um, is that correct? Would that be, would I be correct in assuming that a lot of this would be procedural?
In my, in my view, the lens is procedural. So it's how we're gonna get there, it's a tool.
Okay.
Getting there.
Thank you.
I think what I'm, I think what I'm saying is, one of the, one of the things that I, I see, and I have friends and colleagues and relations on all sides of this issue, and one thing that I see people consistently miss is this notion that if something is inequitable on its face, it's not inequitable. People think that all the time, like, well, you know, there is no inequity. That's absolutely not true. I don't know what processes or practices wouldn't be inequitable in our district. I'm not in the administration, so I don't, I don't have insight or visibility into that information. I'm open to the possibility that there is. But what I'm saying is, you may not see it on its face, and so what the equity lens does, the reason I think it moves into, I think, the reason I think it moves in policies because it gives our, it, it declares, defines our framework for dating deeper into things that are, that on the surface are potentially creating educational achievement opportunities gaps, but because they don't leak of inequity, you don't necessarily catch them, right? So disparate impact from legal perspective, at least from a legal perspective, which is my framework, is a, it's an analysis, it's a tool that allows you to dig into those things and stress test them. And so one of the things is the policy, what I want the community to understand is, it's not just those things that failed the SNIP test originally that are suspect, that if we can dig in and we can use data and we can use information, there may be things there that we really ought to change, but unless you do that work. I hear what you and Mike were saying about, these are more procedural, but the policy describes and defines things that don't have, they're not, they're actually not brought up in the, in the policy anywhere. So to the extent that we've done that as a policy and we've made it kind of an aspirational document as well, not just a, an action principle sort of document, I think this, I think this equity lens and declariness to our community, to our staff and our teachers, I think this is, and our students, it's critical to giving teeth to that policy, that this is the work that we're going to do if we legitimately care about equity, this is the work that we're going to do to get there. And it's the right work, I think. But it's not, if you don't see it on the policy and it's something that isn't documented anywhere, then if I'm sitting here as a director and I didn't know what the equity lens was, I don't know what it looks like for someone, for a student, a parent, a guardian, another teacher, administrator, I don't know what it looks like to them. If I didn't know as a director, then maybe that's my fault. But I'm, I'm speaking too much, but I do think it, it deserves a place in the policy. And then a lot of that policy, we read things on equity lens, that's what that means. That's the work that we're going to do to make sure that we are, we are actually addressing the issues that we say we don't want to address.
So more succinct. No, 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 you're saying, you're saying, if I were to summarize all that in two seconds, you're saying you want it more succinct.
I'm saying I want, I want, I want the equity lens in the policy. I want the policy to say what that, what that means, like what does an equity lens mean for our district? Cause I'm a fan of that. Not because I'm just, because I'm a fan, because I think it's necessary. Cause that word is used all over the place and it's been bludgeoned and it's been politicized and it's been manipulated, just the word equity. Like, I find that I have the most productive conversations about this when I don't use enough work and we just start talking about this really important. So I will defer my time to.
Can I call a question for you?
Yeah.
So I, as, as.
I'm not even on there to be commended.
But we wanna, we wanna prove it, this lawyer. So as we're, as we're sharing your, your expert thesis about this equity lens, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I was trying to figure out how this could be transferred into the policy and I was noticing that these questions are embedded in, on the first page and they're for the purpose of this policy, a focus on educational equity, ways to achieve and help students well, and then there are three bullet points.
Yep.
And those three bullet points are addressed into these questions. So my second, my wondering is, does that satisfy your enthusiasm? Or as, as another choose-your-own-venture option, would it be helpful under equity lens definition, what if this equity lens was embedded right below that? So it's clear that when we talk about equity lens, we're talking about these questions.
Yeah, I mean, Lee, I think that's, I, I won't say that I know exactly how to design it into the policy. What I'm saying is, the equity lens is, as I read it, disparate impact analysis, products lost, that's what it is. It's, it's going in and saying, hey, we have this policy, who does it affect? And then if it has disproportionate effect, is there anyone committing that effect? Right? That's what disparate analysis does. It says, and, and that's, it's a huge conversation these days, right? You see it in everything from criminal justice to, to financing, lending, to everything else is having this conversation now about, well, what's the cause of this? And so I think these can actually, these questions, our questions in this equity lens, can actually be in the policy, say, hey, when we look at things through an equity lens, this is what we're doing. We are asking those questions. And I think they're very powerful questions. And I think it means, to me, when I came on the board, I, I made it very clear, my, I'm not coming in with a plot of laps to draw, I just wanna make sure we're thinking smartly about these issues. And we're not just caring about our kids, but we're thinking about how to care about our kids and we're doing that smartly. And these are the questions that we should be asking whenever we do anything that is going to fork opportunities or fork outcomes. And, and so whether we put the, I mean, for hell, stick the diagram in there, I don't care. And, but I think it have, it should be like one of the segments to the policy, because I think it's so critical to everything we're doing and all the decisions that we, that we say we're willing to make, it really does inform how we make those decisions. That's just clear.
Got just a.
I asked you to listen to Tracy, I'm like, I'm like way over.
I've got a couple observations. I, I, what I, what I see in here, I see the, the themes and the values and, and kind of the heart of what is represented in the equity lens stand-up that we all just got. I, I, I see that perpetually throughout this policy. I, I see it defined as a term at the back of it. We, we don't necessarily call it out, perhaps we could, but what I also see is to the point of the, the tool that it becomes, I, I see it mentioned three or four times in the procedure, that we will use an equity lens when it comes to hiring practices, we will use an equity lens when we have a curriculum adoption and so forth. I see it called specifically there. It could be that, that at the end of the foundational beliefs portion of what we're looking at here, we could say that, that the, in summary of these beliefs, they've got what we call an equity lens or become a tool, what we call an equity lens, we could call it out and name it that way. But just my own observations, what I see are the harder what it is embodied throughout this, particularly this foundational and proportional policy.
Yeah, I think, I, I guess I just, I disagree and I don't see it like any. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm being fixated on actually what this analysis looks like, but again, if we think about a policy that matters and it's something we're gonna stand up in front of our community, I think it's, if, if we add, if, if we add it, and it does nothing else, it underscores the, I think it underscores the intellectual legend we brought to the, to the conversation, right? Because there are, there are, there are those who think if anything has a disparate impact, it ought to be changed. And then the question becomes, ought to be changed? Do you just gut it wholesale, change it over, or do you refine it? I think the more nuanced thinking is, okay, what's causing it and are there other ways to do that? I think that's what's really valuable about the equity lens diagram that says, hey, we're actually, we're actually looking at ways to manage things. We're looking at ways where even if it may not be inequitable by design, we still acknowledge that it's inequitable and we are going to look for ways to make it more equitable. And I think that's what this, that's what this lens does. So this is just my, this is just my opinion, but as I went through the policy without this context and I read it, I, I kept thinking, how do we do that? So if I'm Joe Public and I read this, I'm like, okay, well, how do we decide what are those things that are institutionalizing disparity? That's a, that's a, that's a monster to try and get your head of them, right? And so I think if we, if we can at least allude to some of the, the, when we say, hey, if we're looking, in looking at things that might be institutionally disparate, these are the questions that we ask ourselves. That to me is, that to me is actionable policy. That's, that's, that's principle of action. And so I, I, I think it's instructive, I think it would be not just, it would not be just good for the policy, but I think. And so I, I think it's instructive, I think it would be not just, it would not be just good for the policy, but I think it'd be good for the community as well. That's where we want, I think that's where we want to be known as a district, that we are, we're taking this very, very seriously. And we're thinking about the issues deeply and relying on data and information to make those, so. I'll shut up. My apologies.
I like the passion. The part I think that really illustrates is the challenge that the board has always faced with separating policy from procedure. And the, the language that's found in the policy and the language that you use around disparate impact, that is the what we want to eliminate that. And the methods that we, we use to do it are definitely embedded within procedure. And I guess where my brain goes is, there are so many examples of this. This one is just one that's really easy to put up on a pedestal, because it's very visual, or physical in a matter of. But other ones include even, you know, the five, the five things the boards are responsible for. If you look at the policy eighteen ten, I think it is eighteen ten policy, five things the board is essentially responsible for. It is just this quick, short little piece that is, does not have a lot of meaning to it. But then you jump over and you start thinking about the procedure that accompanies it. And then you take that and go, holy cow, from now we've got to home and cares and all the work that's gone into that. And in our community, just to look at policy within eighteen ten, I would think that there are questions about what is it the board is doing to accomplish this? But you don't find, you don't find the how within the policy in that example, or a whole bunch of other ones like it. I think the other part that jumps out to me is, there's nobody sitting around this table that's been involved in the work that isn't excited about the equity lens and the, you know, the people who've sat around the table and processed the lit and test driven and that kind of stuff. The difference is where it is lived. And in a number of areas, when we have important forums that go along with the procedure, the policy goes with the procedure, it's embedded within board docs as well as a forum. And I think that's a potential for this one as well. The difference is, when people want to know what we're doing around equity or where we stand, is it lived just within the policy or is the procedure also important to tell the story? And I think in so many things, you can't, you can't just look at the policy. You need to dig into the procedure to know how the work actually is done. But I don't, I think we're all speaking the same language, where it's important, but where it lives. We have standards for how to do that, that it's a normal standard for boards. I think that's really what sets the policy the conversation. And I do like that. And you made Tony look short when you...
I, we, as a board, we get crucified on the policy. We get, we get handed on the back, we get crucified on the policy. And so when they're looking, when people are looking for a foot to slip, they will look at the policy. They won't dive into the procedure. And so I, I look at the documents, not just what governs, I look at what the community, what the community about how we, how we make decisions. And so, again, I don't, it could be in the procedure, which is, it should be in the procedure, I'm not saying it shouldn't be in the procedure. I'm saying it's enough, it's enough a way of doing things, which is what the policy is. As opposed to, it's how we do it. It is that, sure, right now, and if it shows up in the procedure and the policy, I'll be okay, you know, I'll be okay. But I think that it's enough of, it's enough frameworky in a way that it needs, that it, again, as I, as I look at the, this bitter conversation that's going on in the public right now, about what are the things we change? What are the things we overfill? What are the things that we keep? This is, in my experience, both in my workplace and in the networks that I operate in, this is something that is just not really talked about. And so it truly represents a fundamental view of how inequity is solved. That's why to me it goes in the policy and not just a, an owner's menu. Because it does represent how we view the solution to...
So I hear you celebrating our efforts and even what you've done.
Yeah, I, I love this, yeah, really much.
In terms of giving you direction, clear direction, I mean, obviously one of the struggles that we have just having to function as a board of five, somebody's got your opinion, you also have your opinion, but you have to work collectively and lean collectively. So in terms of giving you all direction, do you need more direction from us around this? I mean, yes, right? So Director Wiggins, we know your stance, because you could do a quick whip around of our other board directors and share your preference to either have this equity lens embedded in the policy, embedded in the procedure, embedded as an additional form, or completely disconnected from this equity policy. So Pete, do you mind starting off?
I mean, I, I see where you're coming from. I agree with you that there's an incredible amount of input that comes along with it. And to some degree, these are values that are built into the lens that we're talking about. And those kinds of themes tend to make their way into the policy. And I, I speak for myself, you know, where I define those things in here, I would agree that this is a belief that I have. I would probably ask if I agree with those beliefs. So I'm, I'm kind of struggling in the same way that the, it is a very how kind of thing. So I, I, my tendency is to lean towards procedure or law like that, the fact that the public can see where they could go through board docs, they could see that it's, you know, the, the form is right below and the work that's sad and workplaces. See, what is that thing? Is that really what it means like that? But I know where you're coming from, right? I tend to agree that it's, these are really important values. This is, this is a policy that, you know, more than, than many of them will be unspotted. And, and so having a tremendous amount of clarity and, and being bold in this opportunity, I think is important. So, I don't know, I'm right on the fence, but I'm leaning toward more of an emphasis in the policy.
So leaning toward putting the equity lens in the policy, okay. Director Penagra?
I think that, in this case, more information and more resources could be a bad thing. So I, I see it as an opportunity to add, I mean, I'm assuming that this lens is what helped create much of this beautiful work. So I think including it in whatever use it fit, I think is not a bad idea.
So you would be fine with any of those, Tracy? And your opinion?
Yeah, I think, you know, looking at, I wasn't very happy with the equity lens definition overall. I don't think it does look forward to this or on, I mean, it is very limited in what it says. This really does emphasize where an equity lens is. You know, so I feel like it goes with the policy, it goes with the definition base, because the equity lens is throughout this document. And you really need to focus for, you know, accurately what it really means. So I think it goes with the policy, it goes with the definition.
And I tend to be very, I like the kind of rule follower, everything is either black or white. And so for me, I feel like this would be best used as a form. I'd rather have it attached to the form, so policy, procedure, and the form. But that said, I hear my fellow board directors, and so we will go with the majority, and so we will add this to the policy in some capacity.
Well, I'm voting, but you're directing us to do some work and bring back you something that looks like the equity lens embedded in the policy.
Yes, yes.
Since I caused all the problem, I'm happy to, I'm happy to volunteer time. I know it means more for people, so I'm happy to volunteer time. I'm the one who called me the idea, so I'm happy to, you know, try and work to make a framework. It might be really busy, and just to say, it wasn't, it wasn't a deficit. This was just, hey, this, Pete said that this was like, one of the, this is going to be one of those policies that everyone's going to look at as soon as it gets released, everybody's going to be going onto it. And so if we can actually make it sing more sweetly, then why not? And happy to do some living on it.
One of the challenges that the board will also face with this is, as, you know, the equity lens is relatively new, relatively unused, has, doesn't have ten years' worth of education run over it. And as teams continue to use it, most likely will want to make tweaks and modifications. Embedding the entire thing into a policy means revising a policy every single time we want to do that in the work that was going with it. So I would, I would ask the team, or the, when we walk away from here, that we be given some level of flexibility about the general nature of it, so we don't end up in that position.
It's also just from my perspective, it's, while it's super, super important, it's not the only reason. And it doesn't capture everything that we need and that our beliefs are connected to equity in our system. And August's curriculum is a really good example, and it's where Michael, you made that comment that the words equity lens are peppered throughout this, some of which are the diagram, right? Some of which are that, but some are more considerations of equity. When you think about the equity lens connected to curriculum, it's not really the equity lens that we're using connected to curriculum review and adoption. It really is thinking about providing rigorous, culturally relevant curriculum, which includes diverse culture and perspectives. And that's a level of difference that isn't included in the equity lens itself, as you think about that document. That document is more thinking about disparate outcomes for students and first front programs and other things. So just want to, that's where I think Mike's point connected to, we'll want to be really kind of thoughtful about what we put into the policy, because it really does require action for us. And we're in the early stages of use of the lens itself in a variety of ways.
Have that thing been happening?
No, I thought you captured that additional piece, just not relying on it's only, the only tool, right? It's great, but it's not everything.
So is that your, my opinion as far as? It's a piece of it.
Who to?
In regards to the equity lens itself, I agree with you. I agree with defining it better, because really the definition just goes very glossary, aggressive policy. I do agree though that there does need to be some possibility, though, as it continues on, so there is that one merit to it as a form. I think that it may be better to just, because as I think that the definition of it just needs to be defined better, even if you're talking, even if you're claiming as a form, because I don't think that the definition as is currently written in the policy is applying not quite all the deep equity objective where it doesn't make it very clear that you're asking how disparate impact is here. It's more, it feels like it's deep, it feels like it's around that way of getting there. I think that even if it's being included as a form, to more directly address what the aim of that form is.
Madison?
I agree with what you said, yeah.
And any other board comments?
Warren, we can't, unfortunately can't.
Okay.
We can talk to you after the...
Okay.
Yes, but I like, yeah, just...
That's fine.
Haley, did you have something? Are we still on the equity lens piece?
Yeah. No comments?
She has a, yeah, not equity lens.
Sure. The piece around the equity lens, I want to make sure Emily's not here today, I think she knows that, and I will count. And her work over the last couple of years has just been, it's been a loss to live. And so I want to acknowledge that, including leading the work around the development of equity lens and connecting with, you know, those kids who are still here, connecting with so many districts around us and the work that they're doing to learn from them. And also appreciate the steering committee and all the work and extra time that you guys have committed to that as well. So it's deeply appreciated. As far as the directive for us to go away, we will and work with directors and also the equity steering team to look at more closely in ways to incorporate that into the policy that doesn't put us in a position of re-doing the policy every couple of months for updates and learn changes and that kind of stuff. So we'll do that. Hey, do you have some other comment?
Just, Mr. Davis, let me talk about, you know, connecting a face as I'm reading through these words. I saw my thesis this morning, I was, I was at our high school transitions program for a few hours this morning. And so I am thinking a lot about our students with disabilities. And I'm, I'm kind of reading through this, it's the first time I've actually read through this, just in thinking about those kiddos. And I want to make sure that we're, that we're putting the emphasis, that we're shining a light on our kids with disabilities as well. And I see that we have that mentioned a couple of times in here. Specifically, I'm wondering, when we have this kind of equity policy terms and phrases defined, I understand that we have that, you know, as a place to obviously define terms, but it also feels a little bit like, you know, kind of a, kind of a word bank that is highlighting important pieces. And if we're going to be doing that, I wonder, would it be important to have maybe disability in this same list? Just to kind of bring another highlight back onto, onto our disabled population as well.
And can you see, and a third time, is that what you do?
I was thinking of stepping away to kind of mull that over, because we did add the disability to the sentences where we do see it. That's where we were feeling like it wasn't called out, but we didn't even think about the definition page. And I'm wondering, maybe it's a little bit more in the inclusion line than labeling it as disability. But I just kind of want to play around with that.
Absolutely. Great, yeah, I just have to feel a little bit long.
There's a number of points in here where you could get paralyzed by saying all of the things in all of the places, all of the ways that we could possibly have disparate outcomes and all of the different ways that can happen. You list forty-seven things in twenty different places, and you're just going to go on and on and on. There were a few places like that where it popped out to me, like socioeconomic status wasn't necessarily as highlighted in certain spots as some of the other themes are. Privilege as an issue wasn't highlighted as much as racism and bias and so forth. There were a couple of things like that that popped up to me when I was reading through it. I, I'm careful of that balance, the, at that notion that you could, if you, if you list too much, then it becomes a, the assumptions that it's an exhaustive list, as opposed to a few examples of something. I'm, I'm trying to balance that a little bit as I'm reading through it. There were a few of those kinds of things that popped out to me, that, that, that just weren't mentioned in the body of the policy outside of the definitions, that felt like, you know, paying attention to that, to those issues too.
So Pete, the paragraph is making, you're, were you sort of asking that you should have socioeconomic status listed in the definitions, or are you just...
No, not in the definitions. But like the second full, we believe on page two, lists out a bunch of things. It just doesn't happen to be one of them there, not saying it has to be, but that just doesn't happen to be one of them there. The third paragraph of philosophy on page one, third line says, "We recognize institutional barriers, including but not limited to racism and bias." And that felt like privilege was a word that belongs there, that that's something we recognize too. Again, you could recognize fourteen things right there, and not get them all.
Again, we could recognize fourteen things right there and not get them all and probably dilute the value of the, those were two examples of something that felt like it was, wasn't represented necessarily in here that I felt should be.
Matt, do you have anything else?
My other question was, second page, that needs to be, that seems like a deep, a long segmentation. That seems like a how. Just, I mean, like, so that's my thoughts. I mean, I, I did believe you identified the various achievement opportunities regarding your success, but what about the board to adopt to the families in their policy?
President Paul, did you have other comments?
I go back to what you said about actual policy enforcement, right? And that's the enforcement, will we also consider it procedure? I think that also going back to the two pages comments about, I would add off the report too, it's about giving some thought because it's also about actions because even if everybody is sort of feels like these enforcement actions, it's also really how you have, you know, tampering here, you need to give a presentation. We all feel that if you don't get, if you don't create actions provided, so that's not going, that's not going to happen. So I think that, from all of that, I think that, as you read through this, it's a comment and just, just the parts that I have my whole notes on the last procedure here, there's a lot of red, I think a lot of that had been, correct? And the procedure now is a much better job of being an actionable policy as specific as to how it's happening without any sort of an aspiration. I think that, you know, it's sort of will mean providing equitable opportunity in that second paragraph. Again, I know that at the last meeting I said, are we providing assistance and we sort of having fully or are we being encouraged to make use of that? That's sort of the difference between our team, are we going out of systems and funding education like this is supposed to make, or are we just creating and making it there? That's, that's sort of the difference there. And it's a large, and it's a large difference between those two things of whether you are just bringing those opportunities or are you making sure that students are actually able to take, you mentioned that. And going on to the second page, there's a whole, there's a whole section here on the council where I just saw, see that as a procedure. It's such a large part of policy to make sure that this policy is accountable to. And that seems like it would be something that's in the procedure to make sure that we can follow up on that. And the last part is similar to the first part, where in section D, I know that it is also a product that sort of, if I get how or whatever, which, but even if it was a how, I would just specify whether you're collaborating students as in, the student consists, or if you do collaborate and are going out to students and actively collaborating with them. Again, it's sort of the difference between having students create committees and learning through that or creating a committee and then invite students to keep that, that's the difference between sort of path and then collaboration and idea.
I think part of what you're saying to kind of reinforce is the fundamental discussion of what the policy was in the procedure, the, you know, most of what's found as actually that you're referencing there at the end, really leans towards procedure or, or carrying a mention. I guess it really depends on what the board wants to see in policy.
Do you need more session?
What's happening?
Would you like to say direction?
I'm getting egg signals. Uh, you know, we're all talking about the same stuff. It's going to end up a policy procedure in form in some manner. And it goes back to the, the question of what Director Witty is saying, which is, you know, is there a way to make the policy a little more clear that has to meet around what we mean around the equity lens? And I think that, that's the, the premise of it from my perspective. At least that's what I can hear you over and over again. So I think you're going to base.
On that particular point about accountability, the way I read this is that the board will hold others comfortable for these things, which if we're talking about something the board, it feels like it's well placed in policy. That's my perspective, just kind of to drive that line between policy and procedure.
Closest I mean, reason I say this is because that person is worth it, that responsibility is shared among the entire district. So it's not just the board that will be in a council or, but that students are accountable for roles and then lead these aspirations being, and also staff being accountable. So that's why I suggested that some aspect of that being included in the procedure.
To make a hand with this? Will you please? So I, I think I'm hearing everybody say, give me a nod or a head shake if I'm incorrect, that we would like all of these things to be included in either policy or procedure. Please, that includes the equity lens, the notes under accountability, meaning the equity steering committee may feel like those need to be scooted over to procedure, record policy, but we would like all of them to be included someplace. Am I correct? Yes. And a little more. Right. We want to make sure that we're defining, yes, the methods over, make sure we have all of your terms.
Does the board have a preference for those definitions? Do they have metrics and comments about that?
Do you want the definition at the back or included embedded in here?
I think there would be a difference in that if you guys looked at where that would and where that issue goes.
I think Mike, Mike meant, that these definitions themselves go in the policy or are the definitions actually included as part of the procedure? Is that accurate?
That's exactly right.
We work together often. It's multiple words.
So when I went through, I made the point of that some of the things that are defined in the policy don't actually show up in the policy as a client term. And so if you read the policy and you read the client terms, I can't see that anywhere. So I, it matters if it's in the policy or procedures. It's going to be like, I think I have a few questions.
The way I read it initially was they were all in the policy, all the definitions were in the policy type you said, even if the words aren't in there. And so we split them and, you know, take those ones out of the policy, we move them to the procedure, dump them all in the procedure, then somebody reads the policy, it's not the definition. And if you want to defer, we're happy to come up with a different method.
My sense is that you have a lot to talk to me through in terms of where things, or where, no, where things land, truly, I'm being genuinely serious. And so I, I feel like us making that, that recommendation now may not actually be the best choice because you may find that you put something else somewhere in procedure that now needs a definition. You know, it just needs to kind of shake out and I'd rather, I personally would rather defer to you all. But what are you all thinking, direct fellow directors? Do you agree that definitions, they could be empowered to put definitions either in procedure or in policy, or do you have a preference? I lean towards policy.
I, I do too. I, I would kind of defer to the recommendation of staff to, after the deliberation that they do, if they're, if they feel like it belongs in a different place. I really don't like getting it split up though. I feel like it's got to be in one place or the other. Given the importance of what we're talking about, I feel like the policy is.
Yeah, it does. I, I think in one place or the other. I actually counted them. I can tell you exactly where you see them. And they're mostly in the procedure. So if you wanted to just build them in the procedure, you're going to have to, as opposed to moving them to policy. There's like, there's four definitions that don't show up in any of the documents.
In our documents, don't policy, policy comes first than procedure, right?
Yeah.
It goes, in our documents goes policy first than procedure?
Policy.
Yeah. Nice.
What notes should we be taking around the request for any accountability section? Want to make sure that, Tony's got some thoughts about that.
So my understanding was, and I think Pete, Pete, you prefer to keep it in policy.
Say, Pete?
Pete, Pete prefers to keep accountability as is in policy. Haley, you can go either way. Am I correct?
Um, I have to think about it.
Yes, no, yes, you can. Matt, you would rather put it in procedure?
No, I just had a thought on the D saying, I felt like I had one procedure, I just, well, also the woke collaborate, it seemed like an action. If you relate to the woke collaborate, like the policy, you know, which, which.
I was just going to say, if we go along that line, I was just thinking about Matt about what you're saying, if we go along that line, then we have, you know, in C, we have will comply, D, we have will participate, A, we have will use. So if we kind of go along that, then they're all people.
No, I mean, my sense of top three is like the whole foundations, like policy, which is overall to guidance. I see B as an action. Like the board is going to go talk to students and then we try to identify the barriers. I don't see that as something that works. I see that in C and procedures, it identifies school staff, you know, identifying barriers and she, and I really go back to the top of the yellow bowl, elevate the share voice of students and how to sort of, it just kind of goes around that, the bottom of the policy. I just thought that was students on accident, I mean, I mean, I guess, you know, students on accident, but do you really want the board to allow the students to have? No, I think so. I think we want the teacher to do that and elevate that up to the district and then up and up. And then elevate that to, to board members to identify those barriers for us to address. But that's actually, lead a lot of the student.
I think it's a kind of way to make a lot of decisions, but my point is to be that. Your, your point was that if accountability is in the policy, then accountability should sit in the policy, which is what I heard you say, which makes sense to me. If the accountability piece is in the procedure, we're not technically a procedure given volume, then what's the accountability difference? It makes sense to me to put it in the policy, because this is what we stand on when we have to, you know, ask questions.
I, I agree with what Matt says too, that it could be, you just strike the word board from letter D, and you say the superintendent, staff, well, et cetera. Because what we're, we're getting at here is that the board is going to hold the district accountable to do these things. So we're not going to hold ourselves accountable to do the things that we're saying here. That's, that, that kind of takes money if you say the board in letter D, if you just struck the word board. Yeah, I think it's a good, it's a good.
But, but I do feel like as a board member, it is my job to, to listen to families and identify how, you know, barriers that they might be.
I think all of you do that for sure. I mean, you're all on a regular basis in communication with families. I feel like the, the part that makes this different that Michael and Pete are talking about is accountability as a board holding the superintendent and staff accountable. That's what, why it's living here in general. And, and so it doesn't just semantically make sense to say the board is holding the board accountable to do this piece down there.
But using that argument, then A and B also wouldn't make sense because they also need to be in the board.
Yeah, letter B definitely affects what we require to do.
What I feel like I heard, Matt, what I feel like I heard you saying is there's a chain. And you feel like this puts the board anywhere in that chain as opposed to the, if you have an issue, start here. If you don't get resolution, go here. If you don't get resolution, go here. And the board is the last stop. Is that, did I hear that?
Yeah. I mean, the board is working to ensure that the barriers are identified and addressed to human, to human success. The board not really minds about defining what the barriers are. I believe that the board in the district and the schools, in other parts of schools, that's, I mean, it's.
Do not the first call.
Yeah. Is there any other feedback from the board for us? And one other thought, it's not accountability. You ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Going back to, to this document and particularly the top line vision, and we emphasize that it's every student and every adult. And as I read through the policy, I, I saw adults mentioned scattered. It was, it was letter student, eighty to ninety percent of them. And I just wanted those opportunities to pepper in, fold in the adults in our system and what our beliefs are around providing a welcoming, supportive environment for our adults. There's a couple of spots I mentioned, but it's just really weird. So, Tony, I'm going to try to summarize, but you can do my backup summary.
read, came back together, found new things that we wanted to modify. And we're going to go away and look for ways to incorporate the equity lens into this document. We will look closely at the accountability section, in particular letter D, in the language that's used around that. We will, there were multiple sections you took.
There's a, we need to figure out where students with disabilities, and then we'll talk about socioeconomic status, where that fit in as well. It's a lot of role here. The, every time we talk about, like, the students, look closely at why wouldn't we include adults in that same sentence? I think that's.
Yeah. Last one, we'll look to also include, we're inclusive, we'll look at the title, is there something that speaks more to the title? We will revisit the definitions. I'll check in with Michael after we show up anywhere to find out.
Wow!
To find out what the four are that don't appear anywhere in the policy or the procedure. Have we missed any of them?
Kelly and Dean, thank you, despite the bugging of, thank you for the effort.
Mike, for that last part about the four that don't appear, ordinarily you might just think we'll extract them from the definition.
think, well, let's strike them from the definitions. And I challenge that maybe think the other way around on that and say that they meant something to us if we put them in those definitions and stuff, we don't, maybe they should, so.
Matt, comments on that?
Why, because I have to read it before.
Yeah, I want to read it before the art, too. I'll see that.
But, because I like the word.
Well, Haley, any comments on that? We will, we will add this to the list of work and I will work with President Hallwell to find out and with Tony and Emily to find out what's realist timeline and look at the order being scheduled. This is going to take a little time, so I have to see it soon. Any other comments?
We're just so grateful. It's very easy to come into this room and you present this amazing work that you've done, it's taken you years to put together, and then you hear us nitpick about words and, we just want you to know that this, the reason that we're talking so much about it is because it's so incredibly important to us. And so we are grateful to you guys, not only for tonight, but also just for all of the immense work that we put into this, the heart that we put into this. This is going to make a difference for our kids, it's going to make a difference for our adults and our community, and so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, please.
Do you remember back when Tony said that we spent two hours talking about...
Yes.
We did, we did.
From one of you.
What goes for our country.
Yes.
And the steering committee, thank you guys for coming tonight, thank you all for all your work.
Okay, now you're going to adjourn at eight eleven. Thank you, everybody.